Well, I'm gonna call the meeting to order then. Um, let's do a flag salute wherever you are, stand up and let's do a flag salute. Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the republic, to its hand, one nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do a roll call.
Chairman Garnon?
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
And Commissioner Grosso?
Here.
All right, after review of the minutes from the previous meeting of February 8th, does everybody had a chance to review those? Are there any amendments or changes or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Grosso, any discussion? If not, let's do a roll call.
Chairman Garnon?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Grosso?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, as per state law, matters raised by the public will automatically be referred to staff or placed on next meeting's agenda. This is anyone's chance to make a public statement or comments to the commission on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. So is there anybody that would like to comment on anything or bring anything to the commission's attention? You have five minutes. If anybody has anything that they would like to address that's not on the agenda. Thing is that I don't see anyone or hear anyone. Let's move on to the public hearing. Item number one, is an application by AZ Bulldog Farms LLC for an amendment to the use permit for a cannabis dispensary to allow the sale of medicinal and recreational adult-use cannabis located at 1243 Mono Way in a commercial zone. The assessed parcel number is 056190012. Staff.
Thank you. Again, to the public, we apologize for the scrambling here. The city administrator, Mary Rose Rudekonga, is gonna call out names when we get to the public hearing section, so just to let you know, and she'll help you with unmuting as we move forward here with anybody on the meeting. We do have the city attorney here, Nubia Goldstein, so she's available. And I also see that Chief Randerwell is also on tonight, so if you have any questions of him, he is also, or if he wants to make any comments. We do have a use permit amendment. This is tied to the development agreement that you guys reviewed last meeting. This is to allow for adult use and medicinal use at their existing site where they are located now. I will let you know, as was included in my staff report, we have already received their application for a development agreement and a use permit at a new location, which is 1201 Mono Way, just two buildings down from where they are now. That has been out for advisory comment. It will go to the March Planning Commission meeting. When that new facility becomes fully operational, as you can see from the condition that's included, this use permit will be revoked by the city and, because they can only have one location in the city. So I just wanted to clarify that right now we are talking about the 1243 location, which is their current location. So this, this site, their use of this was approved. And they've been in operation since their existing use permit was approved by the Planning Commission. They have been working under the medicinal restriction this whole time. And they have been in continuous operation at this location. It is a 525-foot square building. They aren't making any changes to the building or the exterior of the building at this time, so there's no design review or anything else that is required. And the only thing that is needed at this time is to amend the use permit associated with now that they are asking for adult-use cannabis sales. So I am going to go over, really, there's not a lot new. You guys are aware of the site, you're aware of the location. There was advisory notices did go out. We did get comment back from both our city engineer and our fire chief, making sure that the parking, they were concerned about parking at that location with expanded use. So you will see, yes, one of the conditions, they have worked out an agreement with the owner of 1201 Mono Way to use the, there's 30 spaces, there's more spaces back there, but they're also used by guests at Steakhouse, but there are 30 spaces available for their, the 1243 location. And so they have an approved use of those parking spaces, so that helps alleviate the concerns regarding just having the parking right there on Mono Way. I did include in there as a condition that if those spaces go away, if they no longer are able to use them in case something happens and they don't move forward with the 1201, that they would not be allowed to do adult use at the 1243 location due to the anticipated increase in traffic at that location without that parking in place. So that is a bit of a change from last time. The back of the building is, there's a dirt parking lot back there, gravel parking lot, that is strictly for their employees. And they will continue to have their employees parked there. Jeff, I know Jeff is also on here too, just to let you know, so he'll be available for any questions or to make comments after I'm done. The location meets the requirements under the municipal code. It's not located within 600 feet of a school, a youth center, daycare, church, or park. So that is one of the requirements for the use permit for adult use as it was for medicinal use. And it is consistent with our general plan and it is consistent with Title 17 of the municipal code based on the changes that were recently enacted by the city council. I wanted to go over, we talked a little bit about the conditions. For those of you that were on the commission the first time around, you will see that the number of conditions have greatly increased from what was part of the medicinal approval. These conditions were put together with looking at what other cities and counties are doing and in coordination with the city administrator, the police chief, and our city attorney, Nubia, who is on with us tonight. So I'm gonna kind of walk you through some of the changes that are included in here. There are a number of safety items that are included that are different than what was approved the last time. The last time it was much more generic. This time it's very specific on the safety improvements that need to be done to the building and complied with, so those have all been included. We talked a little bit about the parking. We added that in there to make sure that they had that additional parking that's needed for the anticipated traffic increase. We also, or vehicle increase. We also talked, one of the items like we talked is they can't have two dispensaries in the city, so when the occupancy is granted on the second location, the use at this location will cease and they'll no longer be able to operate from this location. There will be an added inspection by the police chief and fire chief prior to occupancy, and that is included as a condition. There are some exterior lighting requirements that now have been added and that is very specific on how that has to be set up. And then we have something, a condition on the treatment of the air to make sure that the odors aren't being detected from outside of the building. It's very clearly, more clearly described than what we've done in the past. We have, their hours are set. Their hours are 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. And any deliveries that they do from their facility, they have to cease also at 6:00. And then there's some restrictions on the vehicle and delivery. It says clearly that everything has to happen within the footprint of the building, so that is very clear in there. And then there's some provisions in there of working with neighbors if there's any issues that arise from the dispensary operations. We have a condition in for that. We have some conditions in there about what people have on when they come into the dispensary to make sure that they're not blocking their face from any of the video. And there's also some requirements on making sure that the windows are clear and visible, so that PD, if there's an issue, that they can clearly see what's going on inside the building. We have, like I said, there's a lot of conditions in here tied to the security. It's very specific. And if you have any questions, probably true would probably be the best if there is any questions on the type of monitoring and videotaping and stuff that's required. There is a requirement that if there is a crime that happens, that they have to immediately notify the police department, so that is a little bit of a change. And then it talks a lot about the alarms that have to be put in. And again, video, they can't have a public telephone on the premises. There cannot be any games, video machines, or vending machines allowed. They, people are not allowed to loiter around the building. They're to monitor that. They're, again, making sure that nothing is blocking visually, anything around the building or in the windows. The name of that, they have to do some name printing so that on their receipts to make sure it names the store. And they are responsible for controlling any contact of, I'm sorry, the conduct of their persons that are utilizing their facility. And then we are requiring an identifiable security guard. They need to be on duty 30 minutes before they start business operations. And then they are to remain on duty until the last employee has vacated the premises. So that, and it needs to be somebody other than anybody that performs an additional task within the business. So I'm just kind of going through some of the, just kind of, a lot of it again is security. And all of that, I'm just going through here real quick. Some of it's pretty common sense. They can't consume their products while they're working. And it's also, I just wanted to get to this part here. I want to talk to you a little bit about advertising requirements that were included as part of the conditions. The advertising, they are tied, there are some state mandates for advertising for cannabis. So of course they have to comply with that, just like any other state requirements that they'd had on anything else under their license. They also cannot distribute free or discounted cannabis products. And they can't give it to anybody, any person in the public building, building spaces, not licensed for sale cannabis park or playgrounds. So no distribution of free or discounted cannabis in those areas. They have to comply with our sign ordinance. No advertising of cannabis products shall be permitted at city-sponsored events, parades, and street events. So they won't be allowed to advertise for any of our city-sponsored events. Advertising of cannabis shall not be permitted at any public event where the, where the, within the city where less than 71.6% of the audience is reasonably expected to be 21 years of age or older. And as determined by a reliable, up-to-date audience composition data. So they have to document that, that they can't, that their audience is 71, is greater than 71.6% are older than 21. Advertising will also be prohibited at events and venues that include rides, games, and entertainment focused, entertainment focused on youth. So not advertising where, basically where it's more of a youth activity. No advertising of cannabis products, including vaping products, swag, posters, or flyers are to be given or located within 1,000 feet of any public or private preschool, elementary, junior high, high school, public park, public playground, or any other youth-sensitive area such recreation centers, such as recreation centers, daycare, or childcare facilities. And then licensee will not brand, will not brand sponsorship of youth sporting events, youth entertainment events, and any public events directed at youth. Youth includes those 21 years of age or younger. So as you can see from these advertising conditions, the idea behind this is to only focus advertising towards adults, people 21 or older. So that is why those conditions are there. And then there's a few more that tie them to, you know, all different state laws. And there's some identification, our standard identification requirements. And so that is really, like I said, there are 27 main conditions and then several conditions under those items, so. But I can answer any questions that you might have on any of it, and if I can't, I'm sure either Nubia, Mary Rose, or the police chief can. So that, that is all that I have to report. Like I said, I was just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that our conditions are greatly increased from what we had in the past. And it is an existing location and an existing business in the city. So I can answer any questions, or if I can't, somebody else in the room can, I'm sure.
This is Chris. I have a question for you. So concurrently with this application for the use permit, the applicant has also submitted a new application for the new facility. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So this is more of a temporary kind of a situation pending the outcome of any application approval that we may give or the city council might give for the new location, correct?
That's correct.
How long do we, how long do we expect that process to take?
So we, at the next meeting that you guys have, which will be in March, you'll be considering the development agreement and the use permit for that location. And then it'll go on to the council, so you're looking at May before the new location can be up and operational.
The next meeting in April, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions of staff?
No.
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 All right. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Chairman Garnon, he is here. Jeff Musio is here, and he is unmuted. If you have any questions or if you would like to have him address you.
Well, let's just go ahead and have him address the commission and maybe he can add to what Rochelle's already, the information she's given us. Mr. Musio.
He's, Jeff, are you, I see that you're unmuted. Can you hear us, Jeff?
On our screen, our screen, it looks like he's muted.
It shows that he's not on.
You guys, can you not hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Jeff.
Okay, great. Thank you, commission, for hearing this. I want to start off by saying the new agreement that they've put together is very complex and works exactly with all our deficiencies that we had before. We did have a little bit of problems with parking and different security issues and everything, and advertising. And I think they've hit every single issue that we've had problems with in the past and addressed them on this one. So I'm very proud of that. It seems to be a work in progress and they've seemed to nail down pretty much everything that we were having problems with. So looking at that, I think there's gonna be even less problems with this moving forward, so I am very proud of that. And I look at for it as a challenge to meet those things. Some of the security requirements are above and beyond, you know, even like the banks in town and Walmart in town and stuff like that. And we're proud to say that we have gotten a third-party camera system that does facial recognition and they can do some pretty impressive stuff that will help us be able to secure our facility even more and keep an eye on problem people and transits in the area and stuff like that. So we're actually really happy with the way this is all going. We do think this is gonna be a safer environment for the cannabis, our cannabis customers. And we look forward to hopefully performing at a level you guys expect us to perform at.
Jeff, I have a, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is there a difference in the type of cannabis product that's offered whether you're a medicinal customer or an adult-use customer?
No, the actual products themselves are identical. The amount of volume you can buy is different. If you're a medical patient, for example, you can buy up to eight ounces of flour and a recreational person can only buy one ounce of flour. So all the regulations are a little bit harder for the recreational people and they allow a little bit more volume for the medical, but the products themselves are exactly the same.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other commissioners have a question of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question for him. John? I have a question to him. Has he ever considered ever looking at his cell phone and asking the question, does cannabis have any health damage? And has he ever noticed that there are 10 things listed? Addiction, brain health, cancer, heart health, lung health, poisoning, and loss of memory? Does that affect him at all when he thinks of selling his product to Colomy County residents?
You know, I definitely defer back to personal choice and personal responsibility on that type of thing. You know, if you want to use that as an example, you know McDonald's affects your memory, it affects your health, you know, obesity is one of the leading causes of death in America. You know, there's lots of things that you can do to yourself that can harm yourself. But luckily in this great country, we're allowed to kind of make those decisions and be treated as adults. And I think most people make the right decision. And on occasion, if you'd like to, you know, go ahead and use cannabis on occasion, so you can relieve some of the stress of the everyday world, I think that can also be a benefit, not only a hindrance.
Well, wouldn't you figure that if there are more rattlesnakes in your backyard, there'd be more risk of getting bitten by a snake? Just like if there's more available cannabis, more people would become addicted.
Well, if there's already 500 rattlesnakes in your backyard, because everybody's allowed to deliver here in this area anyway, you know, that makes a very little difference in my opinion, to be honest. There's already over 20 people that deliver into this county already and all their tax revenue is going to the counties around us. So I don't believe that analogy really holds too much water here, to be honest.
No, I hardly disagree with you, and I know there's a lot of social damage that far outweighs the tax benefits. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? This is your one good opportunity while we've got him on here, even though Mr. Musio is a stakeholder in this conversation.
I don't. Anderson?
No questions here. Ron?
Peter, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, good. Let's move on to the public hearing.
So if you have any questions for the public hearing, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature in Zoom.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can we limit it to three minutes, please? Because we do have a lot of people on the line.
Yes, no, I think that's a good call and I appreciate that. I didn't call out the rules yet, but anybody that would like to address the commission on this, you are given three minutes to do that, up to three minutes. And I appreciate if you kept your comments fresh and not repeating what the previous people have already stated.
Sorry.
And again, if you are on a phone, you can raise your hand using the star, what, star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. So the first public comment is coming from Joe Von Herman, and I'm gonna ask you to unmute yourself. Go ahead, Joe.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I think you should approve it, largely because I think there's only three things in life that are certain. That's death, taxes, and people are gonna smoke pot. It's not really a question of condoning the use or condemning the use. I don't think it has anything to do with religious or health or rattlesnakes or anything like that. The question is how are you gonna deal with it? And I think there's two large ways you can. You can let the criminals continue to do it, or you can regulate it. And I think regulation is the way to go. I'd say that if there's all kinds of problems with the criminals doing it, not the least of which, they're getting the money. And that money isn't going to any kind of good use. If we regulate it, we know people are getting a product run by a respectable businessman and you can pull the money into the city and use it for good. You know, my two cents is to give the money to the cops. But use it however you want. It's gonna be used a whole lot better than it's being used by the criminals. So I say get the criminals out of cannabis, and I hope that you would go ahead and approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Von Herman.
Mr. Chairman, your next public comment is coming from Bob. And I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
There we go. With regards to the matter before the planning commission tonight, the city has not noticed at least one business within 300 feet of the present AZ Bulldog Farms location or the proposed new location. The relevant paperwork was submitted to the planning department today. The distance may be disputed, however, I believe the claim will stand and should be addressed before this matter is heard. People rationalize recreational pot based on Prop 64 voting results. Prop 64 was sold as decriminalizing pot, not as putting a pot shop on every corner. I've talked to many people who had no idea they voted for pot shops and would totally vote different given the chance. In California, 82% of cities and 78% of counties ban recreational sales. Those numbers are the complete opposite of Prop 64 results. In Colorado, fully two-thirds of jurisdictions have banned recreational sales. People say opening storefronts will safely regulate marijuana and prevent youth access. People who say this are uninformed and are just repeating propaganda from Big Pot. Experience in Colorado and California shows the black market just grows bigger. The reason is simple. Easier community access gets more kids hooked. Once hooked, kids don't want to pay the high prices for regulated products. They just want it cheap and they don't care where it come from. The black market thrives. People say marijuana is not a gateway drug, but rather people turn to drugs because of bad things that happened to them as children. People who say that have failed to dig deeper to understand one of the leading causes of bad childhood experiences is actually kids' parents smoking pot and doing drugs. Not to mention that parents using marijuana just makes it so much more accessible to their children. People label this as prohibition, but it's legal in California. Instead, we are talking about truly effective restrictions to prevent youth access. People should have the liberty and freedom to do what they want, but when it has a significant negative impact on other people, that's a problem. For example, in Colorado, 25% of traffic deaths involved a driver tested positive for marijuana.
Yes.
One of the more insidious aspects of recreational pot sales are the gummy bear candies. Kids can eat them and have no idea what they contain. Consuming a single gummy bear can have lifelong impacts on a young child. Recreational pot shops do affect other people's kids. Please consider delaying your deliberations until the noticing issue is resolved. If you proceed, please vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify that, please? Because Mr. Kirk was in the office today. If you don't mind, I can tell you what we told him.
Sure, go ahead.
So he brought in two addresses. Both those addresses were outside of the notification area. But also, we advised him that the noticing is 300 feet to property owners. So if there's tenants there, it's up to their landlords to provide them that information. The city does a 300-foot noticing, but it's only to the property owners. And everybody And everybody was noticed within 300 feet of both sites.
Thanks for that clarification, Rochelle. Uh, who's, who's my timekeeper?
I'm, I am, sir. Mary Rose.
Okay, Mary Rose. We just, if you could keep track of that, I'd appreciate it.
Will do, sir. And at this point, I'm not seeing any hands raised, but I once again ask the public, if anybody would like to make public comment on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, or if you're on a landline or phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and I can unmute you. Chairman, I'm just going to scroll through the pictures just to see if I see anybody's hand raised in the audience. Before I do one last check, Rochelle, if you wouldn't mind, just double checking for me too.
I'm looking. I don't see any either.
And at this time, Chairman and Planning Commissioners, I don't see any other public comment.
All right. I'll bring this back to the commission and we'll close the public hearing. I want to thank anybody that's, that's made comments to the commission about this.
So I will advise you guys again that the city attorney is available and so is, uh, but, uh, the police chief, if you have any questions.
Commissioners.
I have a question. I'd like to know how the police, police chief feels about this whole thing, what his opinion is.
Chief Fenderwell? Well, Mark.
So that's, that's a pretty broad question. You know, when this whole thing started a couple of years ago, um, I, I'm not a big fan of bringing the marijuana industry into our community for many reasons, but the fact of the matter, it's here, right? So as this development agreement moves forward, we, we sat down and, and, uh, figured out a, a very comprehensive way to do a bit management, manage it here within the city. And I do feel comfortable with the, the plan that we have. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
Uh, Chief, if you could be, uh, handy for a question that I have. This cannabis dispensary, in particular, this medicinal dispensary has been in business for a couple of years now. I'm curious, is it, is it, uh, based on its operation, brought in a, a, a fair amount of calls for law enforcement issues relative to its operation? Or is there, is it, is there been any increased crime as a result of this or any feedback on?
Oh boy, it's, it's really difficult to, um, measure, uh, crime increases and connect them to a specific, uh, business or industry. Um, you know, we, we're seeing in general over the past few years, an increase in, in marijuana use, an increase of, uh, youth use. Um, an increase of, uh, you know, larcenies and other crimes in general. But really it, it's, we don't have a mechanism to, to measure and connect it to this particular industry. Uh, if, if we look, you know, at our neighboring, um, either states or communities that, that have experienced it. They're reporting an increase of, uh, you know, DUIs, uh, drug, drug influenced DUIs and overdoses and those type of things. So we can kind of anticipate that type of thing, but I can't, I can't tell you that here in our community, we've been able to measure, uh, an increase. So that's a long answer for, for saying I don't have those numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Peter.
This, uh, what I'm going to redo is called, uh, revenue versus reality. Marijuana tax revenue comes up short. Tax revenue from marijuana, the council, less than 1% of state revenues where the drug is legal. This is from Colorado. Almost every state that legalized marijuana came up short on initial revenue targets. In Massachusetts, the first year of tax revenue for marijuana sales were less than half of the anticipated $83 million. Even as marijuana markets grow, research shows tax revenue quickly papers off. Revenue projections are unreliable. As states seek to fill budget gaps, research advises using marijuana tax revenue to fill long-term holes. For every dollar brought in by revenue, by tax on marijuana, cities are spending $4.50. You do not legalize the taxation. It's a myth. For you're not going to pay fees, you're not going to be able to pay taxes. The big red herring is the whole thing. The tax revenue will solve a bunch of cases, but it won't. Taxes on marijuana will not compensate for the deficit to state budget. Colorado, who has been doing this for nine years, the state with the oldest marijuana market, is the only state in the nation without a rainy day fund. The budget deficit in states with mature marijuana markets comprises, common $71 billion. Tax revenue for marijuana barely combined for two and a half billion. While the marijuana tax revenue in California still fails to meet its target, industry proponents are pushing legislators to reduce taxes. That was in the LA Times last year. These tactics are not new. Big Tobacco has been lobbying for cuts for decades and has adapted to more stringent policies by strategically aligning with trade groups for convenience stores and groceries. So my comment is, the $300,000 could go to 1.2 million. If $4.50 folds up, and they've been doing this studies since 2018.
Thank you, Peter. Any other comments from commissioners?
Kevin, sorry. Kevin Anderson has a question.
Go ahead, Kim.
Well, I'm reading through the advertising section here. And I'm seeing that the, uh, city sign ordinance is what's going to be kind of dictating this. I'm guessing the signage for the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, does the staff or has that conversation been, uh, has, has that conversation been had where maybe it needs its own kind of, uh, guidance on the sign for this type of business?
I, I'm a little unclear on what you're asking, Kevin.
I'm just asking if the staff has, has considered having this type of business, uh, kind of have its own sign requirements?
Uh, no, we haven't. We've just, um, expect them to work within what's allowed under our current sign ordinance. Uh, they will, however, have some things they'll have to look at as far as making sure that they don't, um, exceed the window covering area, but state law allows for a 33% window coverage, um, with signage. And our code only allows 25%. So our code is already more restrictive on signage than what's allowed through the state. Or what's, um, they, you know, without, if we didn't have that in place. So, so we are probably more restrictive than a lot of the areas when it comes to signage. But they are, will be up to just the one, the types of signs that are allowed under the ordinance. Now, when it comes to billboards, we don't regulate billboards, as you guys know. So, um, those are regulated separately. So we don't have a control over the billboards.
Okay. Oh yeah, thank you.
I'll go ahead.
No, you answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll chime in here. Uh, as an adult use product, I, I gotta tell you, I haven't, I have not lost confidence in adults' ability to make the right decisions. And I, I personally don't want to micromanage what adults want to do. I'm sure there are negative health benefits. Um, as with any substance or certainly anything that's a psychoactive kind of a substance. But, uh, you know, a month ago, we approved a brewery wholeheartedly downtown. And, uh, sometime before that, we approved another microbrewery downtown. And there's all kinds of subs out there. That's family use or adult use that could be very harmful with, uh, heavy enough use or abuse. So I say you regulate it, you sell it and you tax it. And you go in the front door with this and you get the black market out of the picture. It just seems like it's a fundamental principle of this thing. There's been a whole wave of awareness, I think consciousness about cannabis use over the many, many years that, uh, we've seen it growing up and growing around us. Prop 64, I think, has relaxed a lot of things that people can actually grow their own plants at home. And I think they can also have a certain amount of possession without being arrested or being cited. The door is wide open for this. So I have, personally, I don't have a real problem with this.
I have a question, if I may speak.
Go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, Chris, but I do have a real problem when I read the physiology of what this drug does to people. Memory loss, all the difficulties that arise out of this, what Mr. Garso mentioned about the idea of the black market? And how anybody can go ahead and justify making more available, more isn't better. By making more available, you get more people in, affected. This is a very dangerous drug. Cannabis is so much more stronger now than it was back in the hate Asbury days. This is a really dangerous drug. And why do we want to make this more available to our kids and our people? Is this a source of recreation? Is this what we do for fun in this county? Go get high? This is sickening. This is horrible. I don't know how are, how you can live with making more of something bad available to people. Just go look in your cell phone. If you got it right now, pull it up and ask, does cannabis cause any medical problem? It will blow you away. Sorry.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ron.
What is our issue tonight? This has all been passed already, right?
Correct.
Okay, what we're doing tonight is, is, uh, approving the conditions of approval. And not whether this is going to actually happen or not. So, um, am I right?
That's, yes. To respond to your question, um, specifically, the CUP is a requirement as part of their approvals in order to operate. And the CUP is strictly looking from a land use perspective, whether a conditionally approved business type, which in this case, yes, adult use has been allowed and authorized by the council under the ordinance to operate conditionally. Whether the conditions that staff has drafted in consultation with all the department heads and the operator, are to the planning commission satisfaction to mitigate any concerns that you may have about the land use implications of this particular type of business. The CUP and the land, and the land use operation for this business has to comply with the general plan. They have to fit in with zoning. And so that's specifically what we're looking at. We're not looking at the use itself. That's already been approved through the ordinance allowing for adult use as well as a development agreement. So we're strictly looking at the conditions of approval for this project as presented in the staff report and resolution.
Hey, thank you. That, that makes a lot of sense. And it's obvious people have worked very hard on putting this whole thing together. And, uh, to me, it seems like it works very well for this situation. That's all I have to say.
Ordinance set 873 has been approved uh, through past meetings of not only this commission, but also the city council. So really, I, I don't think it's constructive to get into a discussion about health implications. I don't feel equipped personally to talk about health implications of a substance that basically been plugged into something that we've already approved. And you have an applicant here who's been running a business for a couple of years. He's had a track record. He's hit the ground running. You have, uh, you, you really have just nothing more than a land use question here. And it's already been approved from prior discussions that we've had. And I think we'd be out of bounds to try and insert a lot of moral discussions or health issue discussions. That's, that's been resolved. We're, we're here about a planning issue tonight. That's basically all I have to say.
I have a question for the attorney. Is there any way that this legally could be stopped at this point by anything done by the city council or the, uh, planning commission? Is it completely going to go through? Or is there any way that this could be stopped? I'd like to have that answered to see if this goes along with, uh, Mr. Jensen and, uh, Chris Garnon just said. I mean, we're saying it's already approved. Why are we even talking about all this stuff now? Why don't we just go with it? Is there a way? I understand there's a way that this could be stopped.
And by this, uh, Commissioner, what specifically do you mean? Do you mean this CUP, the adult use, the business? I need a little bit more, a little bit more.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak specific, uh, specific. I'm not worried about the medical. I voted for it. But the recreational use to me is deplorable. I know I've talked to doctors. I've talked to many people. I'm just wondering if there is any way uh, that this could be stopped at this point, or is this a shoe-in? Now it's all over.
Adult, adult use generally speaking in the city, because the council has, has, from a policy standpoint, the council has now stated and adopted the provisions in, in city law that allow, allow for it.
What about the use permit? What about the use permit in the final if that was not approved?
The C, so the CUP, uh, CUP is within the purview of the planning commission to either approve or not approve. At that point, uh, whether it's approved or not approved, that decision can be appealed to the city council. And there are specific provisions and requirements under the municipal code that an appellant would have to meet. It would then go to the city council to either approve or disapprove the appeal. So tonight, the planning commission approves or disapproves the CUP. It doesn't go to the council unless it's appealed. So in essence, whatever decision you make tonight, if there are no appeals, that, then that would, you know, depending on what the outcome is, that would be the final decision.
So this is the end of the show right now, basically. Is that what you're saying? There's no way that this could be stopped?
Again, I, and I hate, I hate to parse words here, but I'm not quite sure what you mean by this, because this is, this project, Hazy Bulldog, is currently operational for medicinal. They have a development agreement uh, that the council has now considered for first reading, um, in order to allow adult use. They need that development agreement in place and a CUP in order to operate. So as an example, if the planning commission were to reject the CUP tonight, the applicant has the ability to appeal that to the city council and the city council can then approve or disapprove the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear from you. So it's still out there. We still have to complete all the processes for this to go through. It could be, something could change, uh, the public or a group of people if we have another hearing, whatever. I'm just trying to find out where we stand with this.
Right. But again, one thing for the commission to remember and consider, your consideration tonight is to approve or disprove a CUP based off of land use consistency, general plan consistency, whether you believe the, uh, conditions are, are tailored to address the concerns. But under the city code, adult use is allowed. So the planning commission really doesn't have the authority to say, we're not going to approve a CUP because we don't approve with the use, because the use is already in law. So that, that's maybe where, where you're getting a li- a little bit of that, that issue. But you can't say no to this just because it's the larger policy issue. You really need to focus on the land use issues and all those things that staff's already presented.
Okay, I understand. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Based on the proceedings tonight, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the use permit with the following findings and conditions. Do I need to go through them all?
No, just say as presented, Ron.
Okay, as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Anderson will second. As it's written and stated.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Jensen and a second by Commissioner Anderson. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the question. Roll call, please.
Chairman Garnon?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
No, with all types of empathy, I think this is an outrageous decision to make for the public's health.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Forsom?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate all the input tonight.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the Community Development Director's report.
Thank you. Well, this was so much fun tonight. Yeah, we're gonna do it all over again in April. And so at the April meeting, we will be looking at the 1201 location. And then we have, also, we'll have some information about the new, the existing location for the Brack House, which is down off of Calvira Street. So for the next couple of meetings, it's gonna be kind of the topic of the evening will be cannabis. We also do have some other things, though, going through the work. So we are very busy, and we will have some more things for May meeting as well. So our phone's been ringing off the hook here. A lot of people are looking at doing a lot of different things. So that's a good thing. We do have a new building inspector. His name is Landon Collins. He was the building inspector down in Merced for the, one of their inspectors under their code enforcement division. He hit the ground running. Like I said, we've been extremely busy, and he's doing a great job for the city. So we're very pleased with how hard he's working. He's fitting in really well. So Wilco, I'm hearing they're gonna be trying, try to be open the middle of next month. Actually, on my birthday, I said they can throw me a party and open the store. I'd be happy. So, yeah, so they're moving forward really well. So it'll be great to see that store get open and operating. So I don't have anything else for you guys tonight, but if you have anything that you need, and any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm good, unless someone else has anything else to add to that.
Good.
Let's adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.